And then to the Texas flag. And we're going to ask our brother Charles Hopkins, who's in bright blue today, to lead us in that invocation, if you would please. So would you please stand?
Hello, spring. Father God, we thank you that we have lived this another day. And Father, we lift this court to you. We lift the judge, commissioners, everyone that is part of this court. Father, that everything will be done in a timely manner. Father, we realize that there's a lot to approve on this agenda. And we pray for your wisdom, that everybody will be pleased based upon what's going to transpire in this court on this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, please? There are a couple of scattered chairs, if y'all can find them. Agenda item number two are public comments. And if we don't have any registration, Ms. Mary, then we are going to move past that to consent agenda items, number three, four, and five. Number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Item four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Five, receive and approve Grimes County Third Quarter Investment Report for the period ending September 30, 2019. See page five of this agenda. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items three, four, and five.
Second.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky, to approve consent agenda items number three, four, and five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now go to agenda item number six, Commissioner Precinct Two. Commissioner Dobieinsky, considering and recognizing following employees for their years of service. Sam Nobles, 30 years of service. And Patrick Semczak, 25 years of service.
All right.
We've got Sam third. Get the photo bottom on this one?
Yeah.
Sam, does it feel like 30 years or just yesterday?
No, it feels like it.
Oh, it feels like 30 years. Well, honesty's the best policy. Patrick, will you join us up there? And Patrick's in for 25 years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
Patrick, thank you so much. You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
A year of vacation?
Oh, basically, they gotta go back out to the ground. That's excellent. That says a lot about our road and bridge, Harry. Thank you. All right, with that, then we will go to agenda item number seven. Grimes County Investment Committee, Janice Trent, introduce Samuel E. Vaughn as prospective dealer broker for Grimes County. Ms. Trent, are you here?
Judge, Ms. Trent is not here. If it pleases the court, I can introduce Mr. Vaughn.
Please do.
Okay.
Please do.
Where are you, Mr. Vaughn? You want to come up here? This is nothing more than an introduction to the court. The investment committee has been working on some things that...
Mr. Vaughn, could I get you to stand over here by the podium?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That may be a little more productive from the investment side of the county's money while maintaining the security of the taxpayer dollars. And Mr. Vaughn represents Financial Northeastern Companies, FNC is what they call it. And he is a broker, which is allowed by law for the county to enter into an agreement. And it might be sometime in the future that we approach, the investment committee approach the court for some agreement services with Mr. Vaughn. And I just wanted to bring him to the court's attention today and allow you to ask him any questions. If you have anything to say, you're welcome to say it as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know you have a lengthy agenda, so I'll be very brief. What Janice and I and Marianne have talked about and Commissioner Cox have talked about is serving as a resource on the public investment side of things for the county. I opened the branch office for Financial Northeastern four and a half years ago because the firm specializes in federally insured certificates of deposit from well-capitalized banks. The idea being that through our platform, you can see what the market for certificates of deposit is like nationwide and take advantage of higher interest rates on your investments when those are possible. I'm working with a few over 30 counties in Texas now, as far away as Potter County and Amarillo, Midland County, and as close to home as Brazos County. And we've got about $200 million overall in insured CDs that specifically, in each county's case, fit their portfolio demands and their need for liquidity. So what I wanted to make sure I had done is, you have my contact information. I know you might not necessarily have any questions right away, but if any come up, I wanted you to feel free to contact me as well.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, where are you office'd out of?
I'm in the Austin address, but it's technically Round Rock area.
Round Rock's okay. Austin's a little weird.
But I'm from a small town. I'm from Glen Rose, Somerville County. So that's my background.
And so, one of the things that's intriguing about Mr. Vaughn's business is that it's a no-fee to the county business. You might want to elaborate on that.
Absolutely. That's worth elaborating on. It's no fee and no obligation as well. Essentially, what we do is, we serve as an underwriter for the banks and credit unions that are in the marketplace. So if we find someone that that deposit is a good thing for, the bank is paying us a fee for that deposit. We use that fee to cover all of the charges associated with maintaining a clearing and custody account for the county so that you know that your funds are being kept safe appropriately. And it is a new issued marketplace as well. So it's a, I guess the best way for me to describe it is a level playing field. If you see a broker offering, two different brokers offering the same new issued CD, you're going to be looking at the same price to the county. You're not going to be paying a premium or receiving a discount. So going into it, you know what you're paying, how much interest you're earning, when you're going to get your funds back. And it's also there to serve as a resource. I was just talking to Archer County up in North Texas this morning. They've had an account open for over two years, but they have never made any investments because their commissioner's court hasn't gotten quite to the point where they're ready to do that. So I understand, and I think this is worth mentioning too, it's a process. It's not something anyone should be rushing into. And part of this is making sure, you know, everyone's kind of comfortable and on the same page before we look at what the next best step would be.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Vaughn, thank you. Commissioner Cox, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You said we have your contact?
Yes.
I have a card right there.
I can give you all a card.
Thank you.
And I will clear out.
All right.
Standing alone, the commissioners.
Well, it gets more exciting from this point forward. All right, we will now go to Grimes County, agenda item number eight. Grimes County Elections Administrator, Lucy Abada. And that is consider and take action to certify and canvass the returns for the November 5, 2019 general election. Ms. Abada?
Yes. Get this out of the way. All right, guys, so I've got canvas packets for each of you.
At the court note that she has survived her first election.
I have. It wasn't bad. It wasn't horrible. Election Day, you saw me running around like a chicken with my head cut off. That's a little different though. I'm hoping I won't win today. Okay. So, no big surprises. We had a total of 2,210 voters. Everything went fine. We did have a total of 11 absentee or mail-in ballots, which are featured on the... So your first page is going to show you your cumulative total, so your tally total. And then your next 10 pages are going to show all 10 propositions. So total votes. And then it also includes your absentees, your early voting, and the total precinct reports as well. So very simple. This ballot was very... Wording may not have been simple on the ballot, but the ballot itself was very simple. We didn't have anything local. We only had propositions.
Any comments from the voting public that we only had early voting through the Monday through Friday schedule versus we can vote?
No, sir. It has been brought up in previous meetings for the primaries. And of course, you know, when we have local options that we may need to consider, like we talked about before, having some Sunday options, but not for this time.
So we had people that actually cast a vote, but then they didn't... Total for different? They just didn't check yes or no to any of them? And then...
Right, yeah. So you're going to have some that just, you know, they may have done six out of the 10, or they may have done eight. You know, that does happen.
I understand we even had one voter come in. You mean there's not a, like, Democrat or Republican that's... There's not a yes or a no?
Yes.
And there wasn't, and they said, "Well, I'm not voting," and it worked out?
Yeah. We had one, he was a little angry. I had a long conversation with him afterwards. It's fine. Yeah, it happens. And I know that this ballot was a little confusing with wording and things like that. And so, we did have some people concerned over that as well.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners?
Okay.
Well, congratulations on your first election. It gets you warmed up for the primaries in March and the general in November.
Yes, one, two, three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to certify. It is an actual item, right?
It is.
That we certify the returns for the November 5, 2019 general election.
Second. All right, I think Commissioner Cox is there. We have a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Walker. We have it seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, Human Resources, Lucy Pope, number nine. Consider and approve the updated salary structure and change of status form. See attachment number nine. Ms. Pope?
Okay. Commissioners and Judge, as you're aware, we have a new county system. And everyone who is employed with Grimes County must be listed on the salary structure. So if you'll see the highlighted positions that have been added, we just need for you to...
And those are the ones in yellow?
Yes, the ones in yellow is what we added. And then the change of status form, we needed an updated change of status form. And this status form was created to work for all departments. This form has been looked over by the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, and it meets all their needs.
And the sheriff's office, too.
Right.
Okay.
And so, if I could get y'all approval for the... Both of them, for the salary structure and the change of status form.
I did have a question. Under salary, grade level one, we have a librarian.
Right. She is the part-time librarian in the... So the LE is... I spoke to Todd, and instead of putting SO, he wanted to change it to LE, which is law enforcement. So if you look within the librarian, there's an LE. And then on page three, all of the law enforcement was changed to LE1, LE2, so on and so on. So that covers all law enforcement that works for Grimes County.
And whereas once upon a time, DA's office was under a different series. Now they're considered law enforcement, which they are.
Right.
But they have LE designation.
Right.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you. Can you say what you see again?
Yes, ma'am. Previously, we did not count the DA's office as SO because that was under two different elected officials. So sheriff's office had their own distinction. But now, we have them defined as law enforcement. So sheriff's office, law enforcement. DA's office is law enforcement and so forth.
Right. The investigators for the DA are really law enforcement officers.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And Commissioner Cox, since you kind of are the commissioner overseeing, have you seen this prior to this morning?
I haven't seen this week, but...
Okay.
I have.
Did you have any issues or concerns with what we've previously talked about?
I don't know.
Judge, if there's not any further questions, I move that we approve the updated salary structure and change of status form.
Okay, second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Further discussion? I'll just make the comment, elected officials are now on the salary sheet. You are now recognized as employees of the county. So all elected officials, be aware.
Be aware.
With that, if there are no further comments, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 10, consider and approve adding the word "continuous" to the policy on vacation leave. See attachment number 10. Ms. Pope?
Commissioners and Judge, once again, on our policy of compensation, it does say, effective October 1, 2011, employees who exchange 10 years of continuous service, you know, and it continues on, shall receive the pay increase, which is at a dollar 20. We did not add that to the vacation. It affects their vacation, too. So after they pass that 10, they get to that 10-year, their accrual goes from 3.25 to 5, you know, 5. And so, we need to add that on... Number two, Part B, add continuous years through the 19th year in the position.
Is that after the 19th year? Is that what you want to add?
No, employees who have worked for 10 continuous years through the 19th year in a position. So these employers are aware that they have to have 10 continuous years even for their compensation. And it also affects the vacation.
And that was to solve a little bit of the concern that if somebody worked for the county, say, three years, left for two years, came back, now they work another three years, they don't have three, two, and three, six.
No, it's got to be continuous.
Back down to three years.
It's got to be continuous.
That's not to penalize, but that's typical with what the world is around.
I have a question. Would that also apply to C where it says employees have worked 20 years or more? Would that continuous apply there as well?
Yes, it would. So we could add that to have worked 20 years continuous in that position.
Okay, and I guess the agenda would allow us to make that change, would it not? Mr. Folks?
Sure, Judge.
There may be other changes down below.
Ma'am?
We have the same wording in the number four, A.
We could add continuous down there on A and B. Or just A. For a continuous, a continuous to the 10 years worked in a position and the 20 years continuous in that position.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to go back up to number two, to B. And specifically on B, where do we insert "continuous"?
Employees who have worked for 10 year, continuous years through the 19th year in a position.
Okay. And then, to address what Commissioner Walker said on number four?
Well, we need to go to C.
C.
It's continuous after 20 years.
20 continuous.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And then 4A, where it says 10 years, put continuous, work in a position. And then less than, let's see.
And then also in that one, okay, less than 20 years doesn't matter. 200 hours.
With continuous 20 years in such a position.
With 20 continuous years in such a position. Okay. Are there any other changes anybody see? So it'd be one, two, three, four, continuuses added versus the one we started with?
Yes, sir.
Just a little bit more. It might be five or six.
Ma'am?
I see it may be six. Do we have to know more than just find it?
No, I'm just making sure that we're all on the same page where we're adding continuous in those places. So I've got four additions.
I'm counting six.
Six? Okay, where do you have six?
Down in 4A.
Uh-huh.
You have continuous 10 years. Is that twice or is that once?
Okay, that's one.
See, two 10 continuous years and then one 20 continuous.
Right, right.
So that's three. And then further up, you have A.
A and B, I mean, B and C.
B and C. So that's about six continuous years.
So you're looking at A, B, and C, and then A. There's three at... Then 4A, right? And then three up here. That would be six.
If I'm reading correctly.
Auditors, do you agree on this? The six changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because y'all are the ones that audited us on this. Treasurer's office, have any thoughts? Agree with what's being said, you think?
Just to be clear, it seems like seven. There's three at the top and four at the bottom. I think that y'all are missing that 4A has four. There's two 20s. Everywhere there's years or numbers in parentheses, 10, 10, 20, 20.
Yeah, I do see another one.
So that should be seven.
Yeah, seven.
Do I hear eight? Do I hear... I've got seven. I need eight.
All right.
All right, we've got seven continuuses added. But that should clear that up so we don't have any concern about that. Is there a motion?
I move to approve adding the word "continuous" to the policy on Section 2A, B, and C as noted. And in 4A, there's no 4 on vacation leave. Policy on vacation leave.
Okay. There is a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We will go to agenda item number 11. Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Dan Caswell. Who would be the bearded wonder standing at the podium?
No shave November.
No shave November, that's right. Consider and take action to approve inmate housing contract with Trinity County and authorize the county judge's signatory. See attachment number 11. Sir?
This is the exact same thing we have with Washington and Madison. We just changed the name. Basically, when other county jails give them bind and we're not, we can house for them. And once we do this, they pay us to house for them.
Okay.
This is, that's doing it as a favor. So that's why I'm here.
And the rate that's...
Thirty-five dollars per day, per inmate. And they pay for all the medical and any other expenses beyond that.
And we're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
There's no further questions or comments. I move that we approve the inmate housing contract with Trinity County and authorize the county judge's signatory. Seeing. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. IT Director, agenda item number 12, consider and take action to approve the final payment for Journal Technologies for Justware Software and to terminate the contract effective 12/31/2019 for County Court at Law. See attachment number 12. I don't see great... Andrew in here?
I can speak to it.
You can speak to it, okay. So let's take a look at number 12. All right.
Okay, this is to get out of the agreement that was originally started with the district clerk's office and then moved over to the county court at law office. We have found some better software that will interact better. And this has been dragging on for five years or more. And so, Greg has negotiated with him. He went through all of the contract and all the payments that we had made to them. And he came up with this same dollar figure. And we countered offered, and they said, "No." So we would like to just get this paid and get them out of our hair.
Okay. We did have Mr. Folks kind of involved in that a little bit, did we not?
Mr. Cannon asked me to review his proposed letter to Justware to indicate that we wanted to terminate, and he wanted to make an offer. And I said, "Let's just ask them what their number is first." That's the last that I saw of it. So I'm assuming Greg handled it after that.
Yes, sir.
I have not talked to Greg since he and I talked about that letter.
And to make clear, the DA is still...
The DA is still on. This is just to take care of the mess that's been going on with county clerk and county court at law.
And we have a budgetary item to...
We have fund balance in this fund to take care of it.
And originally, this was a $430,000 contract. And we were negotiating down to 79.
Yeah.
Yes, but we paid some of it.
Yes. Okay, so, but we won't have as much hosting. We'll only have that one person hosting now, DA.
DA, yes. And their agreement is about 32, 35,000 a year.
Commissioner, Greg did the calculation of how much they had provided to this point that he felt like was an obligation of the county. Again, I have talked to him about this number. So, I mean, there is that issue, assuming that he's agreed to that. And I certainly take the auditor's word for it. But this was for services, this is a bill for services that have been rendered to this point, which the county has to pay.
And Greg and I did have, he and I had multiple conversations on this during his negotiation. And I don't remember the number to the penny, but this is, it was around $80,000 when we were talking. So this is fairly close to that.
Well, he did, our journal did send a letter about how much we were paying on the hosting fees and the subscription fees. And I think Greg did an excellent job in negotiating us out of this contract.
With that, would you care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the final payment to Journal Technologies for Justware Software and to terminate the contract effective December 31, 2019 for the county court at law.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? There's a motion before the court on agenda item number twelve by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go to agenda item number thirteen, Emergency Services Emergency Management Services Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly. Discuss and take action to approve Shiro Volunteer Fire Department's request for early second quarter payment. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, sir. As you know, Judge, Shiro Fire Department approached you and I about possibly getting an additional, like an advance payment on the second quarter. They have several upfront costs that they need to meet, such as for their insurance and so on. And they requested the court consider approving an advance payment on their second quarter. I can tell you that for the contract, for the tiers, they meet all the way to tier four with nothing in progress. Everything is, is good to go for them.
So they're solid?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just to remind the commissioners, one of the changes that we made on the contract, instead of paying the full stipend at one payment at the beginning of the year, we moved it to quarterly. And Shiro is saying that their one quarter payment is not really enough to cover their insurance in total. So they have requested a second, their second quarter payment early.
I, I just have a concern that if we approve this, we'll, we have other fire departments. Are we gonna override?
Well, we, we could have that request come up. I don't expect that we would have that by each fire department because some departments might have a little bit more, I say a little bit more, some have a lot more cash on hand than others. But because this is a change, particularly this year, from what they've been used to, I would be, well, I'm even ready to make the motion if I need to, but if, we budgeted the amount for the full amount for tier four, so we know we have that money available. So it's no penalty to us as a county to pay it all at one time. But it was designed to encount, enhance the county's cash flow by paying on the quarterly. And the second component of that was for any department that might be at a tier one or two working towards a tier three or four. Once they achieve that level, then we would up their quarterly amount to the tier level they are qualified to receive. Is that right? Did I say that right, Mr. Lilly? Okay.
And they're at a tier four?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're, yeah. So they're at a thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. I don't know what that is divided by four. We've made one payment to them, or we're making one payment to them? I don't know.
Ms. Grant, do you know if one's been made?
Okay.
That's a monthly or a quarterly payment of ninety-three seventy-five.
Okay.
So this would be a total of eighteen seven fifty.
Judge, if I could just along the lines of what the commissioner suggested. If the court intends to, and you may or may not want to put it on a future agenda, but it seems like clearly is a modification of the contract, because there's no provision in the contract that allows early payment. So maybe you want to consider that modification. But I want to be sure that everybody on the court is clear that this is distinguished either from future years or because of this particular circumstance for Shiro. You recall, of course, we've got an equal protection issue here and you've got to treat every department the same way. And so if all of a sudden via video, every department's in here next meeting says, I want to advance mine. I want to speed my payment up. I want it, you know, next meeting. Have to decide why it is that different departments are going to be addressed or dealt with differently. I certainly understand that this being the first year, that that would make sense that there would be a transition period. I'll leave to you to decide whether we want to do a modification of the contract. You know how much effort that took to get those contracts signed. So I don't know that you want to put it on the agenda for a formal modification. But I just want to be sure that it's, everybody on the court is clear that there's a reason behind the change or the approval that's being made today that would apply across the board or to folks that are in similar circumstances.
And, and the chief, Dan Sharon, from this department came in on a meeting, requested meeting. Talked with Mr. Lilly and myself, explained his situation and said that we don't have enough cash flow right now to cover our insurance. So we don't want to inhibit them from working uninsured. But his request was reasonable. And I, and I wasn't going to approve it just on my say so or Mr. Lilly's say so. That's what we have in front of court today. And then if we get them all, if we get all the departments up to a tier four by next year, maybe we choose not to do a quarterly payment, or maybe we do a twice a year payment.
Do I hear you saying that you think that's necessary, that we do a modification?
I don't think it's necessary. I'm just, it's not in the contract. This would be a modification. Whether it's a written modification or not is the only question. So this would be a modification, which is fine. I'm just saying that if you get a flood of other folks making the same request, then you're back to where you were and why did you make the change in the contract anyway? And I understand that maybe next year you go to semi-annual at one time, and all that's fine. I just want to be sure that everybody on the court is clear about why these folks are being treated this way. So that when, when and if another request shows up in front of you, you treat it similarly.
Sure. Good advice.
Yes, sir.
The contracts are with each individual fire department.
That is correct.
So with respect to what the county attorney is saying, if in fact somebody does request early payment, we can certainly address those individually and assess the needs for what we need to assess going forward.
And that, and that's what was done in this business. And I appreciate that comment. So with that, is there a motion?
I move to approve Shiro Volunteer Fire Department's request for an early second quarter payment.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number thirteen by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. On agenda item number fourteen, consider and take action to approve the addition of four Todd Mission VFD Volunteer Fire Department handheld radios to the Grimes County seven hundred, eight hundred radio count. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, sir. Todd Mission Volunteer Fire Department is currently using the seven, eight hundred trunking system as their primary in all fire and accident responses. One of the main reasons they're doing this is that they have found that this system is very reliable, more so to some extent than VHF, because as we know, we have some issues with VHF on the southeast side of the county. Also, they, the fire chief is looking to eventually try and have each one of her active firefighters have this capability at least as a handheld when they're operating on the ground. So they went and purchased an additional four radios. And they vetted this through Thomas Gilbert with the BBWAX at the COG to make sure that these radios are suitable and properly programmed to be able to be used on BBWAX. And he gave them a thumbs up on that. But now we're just asking the commission's court to consider adding these to our radio count. Again, this will not actually take effect on our budget for the amount of money that we pay until next year.
But by next year would be about an eighty dollar increase.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And for the record, do you know how many radios Todd Mission currently has under subscription, less these four? That would be handheld vehicles?
Including vehicle and handheld. I, I don't know the exact number, sir, but I would say somewhere in the range of about eighteen to twenty.
Okay. And then four more on a top, on top of that?
That would be without these added to it, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Lilly, will you remind me what the agreement is with regard to who maintains ownership of the radios?
The fire departments maintain ownership.
Even of the radios that we acquired?
Yes, sir. We are responsible for tracking these radios because they are on the BBWAX system. But they're not considered BBWAX resources or county resources. Once they're provided to the organization, whether it's sheriff's office or fire department, they become the property of those departments.
Okay. I didn't recall that provision. And if that were not the case, I was going to suggest that we have them label these radios because they would be treated differently. But you're saying they're all treated the same.
Yes, sir.
And we made sure they became, and Mr. Lilly worked it out with BBWAX, that it was not an issue. We get them under the watchful eye of each of the volunteer fire departments. That way it's covered under their insurance. So if they lose one, one stolen, they can claim it and potentially get a replacement for them.
Now, I just remember how, and I don't have it in front of me, I didn't remember how we ended that discussion about who was going to have ownership, because there was a discussion.
There was.
The initial discussion, when we had the meetings, I want to say back in the spring, when we were first looking at this, was that these radios would be treated sort of like grant funded radios where the county, in my case, myself would, on behalf of the county, would inventory these radios and maintain control of them. But the, several of the fire chiefs brought forward a concern about that, that any assets that we provide to them, like the judge said, these assets, if they're not considered fire department property, if something happens to them, they cannot make a claim with their insurance companies for this because it's not considered fire department equipment. So after discussing this with the judge, we, and I brought it before the commission's court, I believe in the last meeting, Judge, if I remember right, that we changed the status of these radios to fire department, or again, basically, in this case, fire department. But any radios that we received that are added to BBWAX, whether it's sheriff's office, constables, or fire departments, those agencies would actually maintain responsibility for those radios. And part of the reason for that, again, is that they're not actually grant funded either. These radios were basically gifted to us, so.
Right, and that was where I think my concern rose originally. We don't even belabor this thing. But it was if they were being given to the county and the county was turning around and giving them to nonprofit corporations, was BBWAX and/or the COG okay with that? That was the question.
Yes, sir.
I think it addresses it in the contract, but I would say check the contract because I do remember seeing.
We did make the change on the contract, yes.
And we also got some guidance out of the auditor's office with Talita working with us. She was in our conversation, was quite helpful in those conversations, so.
And it wouldn't change today. All I was suggesting about today is if they were going to own these because they purchased them, that they labeled them so that one day they're going to dispute about whose radios belong to whom, we'd know, but it's irrelevant.
Okay, based on that discussion, is there a motion on agenda item number fourteen? I move to approve the addition of four handheld radios to Todd Mission VFD to be added to Grimes County's radio count. Is there a second?
My second motion.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number fourteen by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number fifteen, Grimes County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski, consider and take action to approve a contract for scanning, indexing, and preservation of county clerk records, data, preservation solutions, and authorize the county judge a signatory. See attachment number fifteen.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, so this is a proposal, and by the way, Mr. John Rickaby, if you guess is here, if you have any questions, he's here to assist me today. And so this is a scanning project. Part of my records archive plan was to get the marriage records scanned and also the city of Nevisota records that we acquired earlier this year. So it's a two-part project. So I brought some samples with y'all today because I want y'all to see, you know, the condition of these records and, and the importance of having them preserved. So the proposal includes scanning, indexing, and preservation. So the first thing we have is marriage licenses. And these are original marriage licenses from the eighteen hundreds. And they go all the way up to the early nineteen hundreds. I have twenty drawers like this full of marriage licenses. And they're handwritten in ink. And wow, they're very valuable. And they're getting deteriorated and they're being stored folded, which causes the paper to start to deteriorate where the creases are.
What's dropping do to them?
And so in this proposal, we're going to flatten them out. He's going to scan them, or his company is going to scan them, and then treat them with a chemical that will stop the erosion on the paper, keep it from aging, and then put them in plastic sleeves. And we're going to have them about put in books. So the scans will be available online. The books will be available for anyone that wants to see them. But they'll be preserved in these books and they're acid-free sleeves so that they won't deteriorate any further. So again, I have twenty drawers full of these.
So like, and just on marriage licenses, would those be opened and put in a sleeve where people then don't have to?
They don't have to touch them.
Okay.
They can open them and look at them without having to handle them physically, yes, yes.
And there's not a concern with the chemicals in those sleeves or the petroleum products they're made out of deteriorating the records, sir?
No, and those are special sleeves that are acid-free and protect the records.
Okay.
And the second thing is the marriage books, okay? And so we have, we have about forty marriage books, but these are the older books, okay? And so this one is book H. This is the very first one that we have. And as you can see, it's very yellow, very old, very fragile. It's even got tape. It's all handwritten. These are our early marriage records going back to eighteen fifty and beyond.
Do those books coincide with these drawers of records?
Some of them do, yes, sir. And some of these books here do have these records in them. But for some reason, at the time, we didn't give them their license. For some reason, we kept them. But at some point, we started giving them to them. So these are very valuable to the county and need to be preserved. So these books here that I have with me will be scanned and treated, put in sleeves, so the pages will not deteriorate. And then we'll put them in new books. And I believe there's a total of, correct me if I'm wrong, John, I think there's a total of ten books we're going to do.
What was it, twelve trays?
One, two, there was twenty, twenty trays of these. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And then there's two more. I have an option A and an option B. These are, their option A has eight books plus these drawers. Option B includes two additional books, but that adds about another fifteen thousand dollars to the proposal. So I've, actually, let me hand you the numbers.
You gave us a packet. Is it in that packet?
Yes, ma'am, definitely. I did go get bids from other companies because I just didn't want to get one bid. So this company had the lowest bid. And I reached out to my county clerk community and I got many, many highly recommendations for this company. They've all been very pleased with their service and recommend them.
And Vanessa, this is a DIR contract, is that right?
Yes.
And you didn't ask for my two cents worth, but what she's just said to you is what you want to see when somebody is proposing a contract, obviously, for?
Yes, there's the DIR contract numbers on the face of the proposal.
Okay, DIR means it's technology that's been essentially subjected to process by the state of Texas, such that you don't have to do competitive bids on. This doesn't mean you can't. You can choose to. What I just meant to say was, what Ms. Brzezinski is saying is, having shopped it and having looked around, that's the elected official's job. It's not necessarily your job to micromanage what they do in their office. It's a huge expenditure and obviously you need to be consented, or ask for your consent, especially if we're using one of those accounts that requires your approval. But this is the kind of shopping that you want to see, even if it is something that's not, doesn't have to be subjected to competitive bids. It just seems, it always seems silly to me when folks have come and asked for approval and said, you know, I've gone with my gut and with the first place that I went to. Well, you, in your personal life, wouldn't buy a TV and not shop it a little bit, I wouldn't think. Maybe you would, Judge, I don't know, but I wouldn't.
I don't watch TV.
One other question. Vanessa, which account are you planning on paying for these items?
Okay, so we have, you know, thank you for doing this, by the way. Mary Nichols passed out a sheet for y'all. So we have two phones, we have phone twenty-one, and which is our records management phone. And then we have phone fifty-four, which is our records archive phone. So we can take So we can take the money out of either one because this is records management, and the books are our archives. So if one fund is not enough to cover the entire project, I would think that we can use funds from the other one, correct?
Well, I wouldn't, wasn't prepared on that particular question. My concern was that in Fund 54, where you can do your archiving?
Yes, ma'am.
Because so much was spent last year.
Right.
You don't have anything left in there except, I think we budgeted you $78,000 for expenditures for this year, and I don't know if you had any projects lined up for that.
Well, that's what this is, this is, yes, ma'am.
So $78,000 would be all that you would have available in Fund 54.
Right.
And then you should have, at the end of the year, you should have $232,000 left over in records management.
That's if I spend all that was budgeted, the 69, 939. Is that what you're saying?
No. I'm saying the most you can spend out of Fund 54 for archiving is the 78, 118, 93.
Right, right.
Okay? Then what I'm saying is, you've got $80,000 budgeted in this year.
Yes.
In your records management.
Right.
But if you receive in all the revenue that is projected to come in with your expenses and the other $45,000 expense there, you would still have $232,000 available in that fund.
Okay, so would I, would that money be available if necessary to cover?
It's certainly fine for the records management, but I know that archive fund was set up specifically to do archive.
Right, right. Yes, ma'am, thank you. I just wanted to show you just a couple more of these books and the condition of them.
Ms. Vanessa?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question while we're on this?
Sure, sure, yeah.
On the subject. So on the sheet you gave us, and it says tax slash AC records, is that the tax assessor?
That's the money that y'all allocated for the tax assessor to use to have some of her records scanned.
In the 2020 budget. So what I was about to say is, so Fund 21 is a shared records management?
Well, technically, no, this, they just made an exception. It's only supposed to be used for county clerk funds.
Up until what, January this year?
After, yeah, after January 1, it can only be used for county clerk.
Okay, so even with that being budgeted for the tax assessor, and what she has budgeted for the 2020 of $80,000 in there, that's going to leave her a fine balance of 232. So according to what, if I'm following you correctly, you're going to take your $80,000 that'd be budgeted for 2020, and your 78, 118, 118 over here to make?
And I've done the math on that, Angela gave me, yes.
But it's still going to leave you, the total, even if you went with option B, you'll have something left.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So if we go with option B, there'll still be money left in there, but if we go with option A, there's a little bit of a deficit, which could be made up from what's in the balance, but, you know, it's going to be a long-term process. This is about, what, a six-month project? And so we're, I want to concentrate on getting the marriage licenses done first because, to me, that's, you know, a very important thing. And then the, all the records we got from the city of Navasota, none of that has been scanned, and so, and it's all in book form, and so that is going to all have to be scanned.
Well, did you have any other projects that you were looking at for the $80,000 that you budgeted?
Yes, my plats, and that's the next slide of my, yes, ma'am.
I know I shouldn't ask, but the city hadn't offered to give you any money, right?
Well, I haven't asked, but I guess it doesn't hurt to ask.
I think we asked that question a while back, when we realized what we did.
Would you call and let them know this, our county attorney wants to know?
I'm looking at Mr. Cox.
What's that?
I'm looking at you.
I'll be glad to call anybody you need me to call, Judge.
Does this, this, now, I see plats on here, but this is not right now, this?
We're just talking about marriage records and the ones highlighted in yellow.
I see options.
Yes, ma'am. The marriage records in the city of Navasota. Now, there's other records that he gave me quotes for that's not included, just because, you know, budgetary, for budgetary reasons, it's going to have to wait till next budget year. But if we can at least get these two things done.
Now, if you go with the plat options, where is the remaining balance? We would have to do a budget amendment.
Possibly, yeah.
So if we went with option A, we don't have to do a budget amendment?
Correct, correct. And like I said, those two books aren't as critical as these other books, so if, you know, if we put them off.
Till next year.
Till next year. They do still need to be scanned, but they, they don't necessarily have to be preserved. That's where the cost comes, when you're getting the books redone. The scanning is not as big of a cost as having the actual book redone.
Is there any cost savings if it's done at the same time while they're here?
Well, I would say, as far as scanning goes, to get as much scanned at one time, because my goal is to get all the marriage records scanned.
Okay, option, the difference between option A and option B, is that just the additional plats?
Just those two, no, this has nothing to do with plats, this is just books. It's two additional marriage books that I would like to have restored, but they can wait if we have to wait on those two. They'll still get scanned, they just won't get preserved.
I'm showing that there's like only about $13,000 difference between the two.
Yeah, that's it, mhm.
But then once she adds in the options, then she's less what's been budgeted for 2020. So if she went with option A, she can still do the two plat, or one of the plat options, and perhaps wait till next year to do the two extra books. Other than that, we'd have to make a budget amendment. Did she give you this sheet?
Oh, I gave one, I didn't have any more, I'm sorry, they're looking at. Preferably, you know, when they're in the scanning process, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, you know, once they've got the book, they have to take it apart to scan it. So it just only makes sense that once they've got the book and it's taken apart, to go ahead and finish the process and have it put in the sleeves and have it restored.
So the two books, they won't be taken apart unless you have to, right?
Right, right. And some of these books have already been restored, these are just ones that haven't.
Are any of these people still alive?
I don't know.
That's not meant to be funny, but it might come up in probates or something, or bills.
Sure, yeah, I don't know. I'm guessing probably not, most of these are from, they got married in the 1890s, so yeah.
Yeah, they're probably.
They're probably long gone. But my goal is to have them scanned so that when people want to do their research, they can find them, and preserve them so that they don't deteriorate any further.
Just to be clear, so these are our marriage records books?
Yes, these are our marriage records.
And the vital statistics that we got from the city of Navasota, you have that amount broken out separate?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that all of the information we received?
That, all of the books, yes, ma'am. And in the proposal, it lists each book individually and how many pages it is, and how much it will cost to have it scanned and indexed. There's 13 birth records and four, five death records, six death, seven, eight, nine, 12 death books. It's, it's just birth and death records from the city of Navasota. But some of those also go back pretty far. And they're willing to start on this as soon as possible. Mr. Rickery, did you want to say anything about your company?
I can just say a couple, a couple words if you'd like.
Could I get you to come to the podium, please, sir? And if you would, identify yourself.
Yes, my name's John Rickery, and I'm with Data Preservation Services. Our offices are based out of Irving, Texas, suburb of Dallas. All the work that is going to be done on these records will be done in our offices by us, and so basically, it's, it takes, we take great care in providing good security, good handling and care with these records. We have substantial experience, we have some employees who go back 50 years in handling this type of records, and we've been doing this for quite a while. So we will take good care, and as was mentioned, we do this all over the state of Texas, and this is the kind of work that we specialize in. We don't do commercial work, we focus on government agencies, particularly, you have county and district clerk offices, predominantly, some tax assessors. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they will do this as a bill as we go, so like, he'll come pick up maybe two or three books and have them done, and then bring them back. That way, all of our records are not gone at one time. And then as, as we go, so it'll be billed in increments, it won't be a one-time payment. That's correct.
Correct, everything is billed as we go.
So that would leave us having to do a budget amendment, if I make a mistake, about $10,000.
If we do the, looks like an option.
Six, eight, if we do with one of the options.
But that's assuming that we, that y'all approved the plat project, which is for now, so, yes.
Okay.
And we can take care of that if we need to.
Well, I'm of the opinion that we can possibly do something, but I would not prefer to do a budget amendment if we don't, if we don't need to.
And it's going to be done in stages, so we may be near that point.
Yes, ma'am. It could be, we might find that we have a lot extra in there, just, you know, it's because it's just an estimate, and his figures are just an estimate as well. So it could be, he may get there and find out that it didn't quite take, you know, as long or something. And so his, his numbers could be lower, or could be, you know, hopefully not higher, but, you know, once they actually get in there and start doing the work. But he was, he spent several days going through all of our records and counting and looking at everything, so I'm pretty confident that his proposal's pretty accurate.
So on this particular agenda, scanning option A would be the option that?
The less, the lesser, the one that's 170,000.
That would prevent us from having to do a budget amendment?
Correct.
Going forward.
Don't be making a mistake.
No, I hadn't made one yet.
Why not?
All right, is there a motion on agenda item number 15?
It's okay. I make the motion that we stick with scanning option A.
Okay.
I can catch you.
No problem.
Second, thank you. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox, in regards to agenda item number 15 and selecting scanning option A. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Go to agenda item number 16, consider and take action to approve the proposal from Scott Merriman for the scanning and indexing of county plats and the purchase of new plat cabinets, see number 16.
So commissioners, I know we had talked about maybe waiting till we, next year to get the plat cabinets, but these plats are really getting torn up, and they need to be in sleeves, and they're not. And this company has come out and given me a quote to, it's kind of like a package deal. So they'll come in and scan all of our plats, put them in the computer so that they're searchable, index them, re-index them, put them in new cabinets, because right now, the cabinets they're in, they're too close together, they're not protected, they're getting bent up. Plus, with them being scanned, they'll be accessible to the public, so we won't have many, as many people hopefully coming in and handling these plats, but we still want to make them available to anyone that needs to come see them. And so the proposal is to have what they call stacked cabinets, because we have some plats that are half-size, and then we have some plats that are full-size. So the, so to save space, the bigger plats will be at the bottom, and the smaller plats will be on the top.
So it's a double, kind of a double layer plat?
It's a double, yes, sir. And he says that they can probably start this in January.
And this is the same company?
Yes, sir. No, this is a different, this is Scott Merriman. This is a company that I use a lot for restoration for some of my books as well, and I've been doing business with him for a long time, and so has Mr. Pascal.
Now, is this included in the figures that you had budgeted?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, out of that $80,000. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so irregardless, if these are approved, then we're going to still have to do a budget amendment?
No, ma'am, this is included, this is included in that total. Yes, ma'am.
Now, on the scans, is cold file actually a little bit cheaper?
Well.
Or are they not doing the same thing?
I, I don't, they're not going to, they, they weren't going to do the same thing, they were just going to come in and scan them. They weren't going to put them in the sleeves or put them in the cabinets or anything like that, yeah.
I do, it's hard for me to, to talk about buying new plat cabinets when we have some other issues coming up that may, if we're talking about building a new building, we may just be throwing good money after bad about buying plat cabinets at this point.
Will those be, those are transferred over?
Well, oh, most definitely. It'll save space in my office and have a better storage option for what I have now, and if and when we do get into the new building, they'll, they'll be able to be just moved right over.
And plus, the funds that she's using cannot be used towards the building.
Yeah, these are restricted funds that can only be used for archiving, so I've got the money, I might as well use it for something that needs to be done.
It's not like you can use it for something else.
Sir?
It's not like you can use it for something else.
No, that's correct, yes, sir. And these cabinets will be enclosed, they won't be open, like, the ones I have now are just stand, and there's no door or anything, they're just open to the elements. These new cabinets will have actual doors that you can close so they won't get dust, and then plus, they'll have those protective sleeves to keep them from getting bit and torn and yellow and beige. And this, this proposal, he says, he estimates, we have 750 plats, and with these new cabinets, I'll have space for about, what do they be total, a couple hundred more, which at this rate, we've been getting a lot, so that probably wouldn't take too long to fill those up. All four cabinets, a whole total of 800 plats, I'll only have room for 50 more.
Are all your replats in the same cabinet, or same, kept in the same place?
Yes. Although we do have some older ones that I have found that's back in the vault, and I think Mr. Lowly has some as well.
I was just pointing out for the commissioners' court, every time you approve a replat, you need more space.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. So we, you know, we're running out of room already, so these new plats will give us the space for those.
And this was something you already budgeted for in the 2020?
Yes, ma'am. And this is also part of the archival plan that I presented to y'all earlier this year.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve the proposal with Scott Merriman for the scanning and indexing of county plats and purchase of new plat cabinets. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 16 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion on item 16? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to hold you to that six months because we're tired of talking about preservation and we want to get it done. All right, Roden Bridge Engineer Harry Walker, considerate, number 17, consider and take action to approve the replat of King Oak Subdivision, Section 1, that combines Lot 143, 2.953 acres, and Lot 144, 1.25 acres into one lot. To be re-designated as Lot 143-R for 4.203 acres. That is the same information that we had in our public hearing this morning.
That's correct.
Has anything changed, sir?
Not in the last hour.
Okay.
Everything's in order with this replat. We're recommending that be approved as submitted.
I move to approve the replat of King Oak Subdivision, Section 1, that combines Lot 143 and Lot 144 into, re-designate Lot 143-R.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Mallett on agenda item number 17, a second by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? I would like to know, is there a fee associated with these replats?
There is a platting fee that we charge, yes, sir.
So when they replat that, we charge that fee? What is that amount?
150, David.
Uh, written about 150.
Anything up to 10 acres is 150, and that's not including filing fees.
Okay, so filing fees out of the county clerk's office is an additional charge?
Yes, sir.
And how much is that?
It's about $200.
How much?
$200.
So for somebody to do a replat, it costs about 350?
Yeah.
And that money goes to where?
Advertise.
Ms. Nichols? Where does that? That's all right. When, when they do the county clerk's fee and they do the subdivision coordinator fee for replats, it's about $350. Where does that go?
Some goes into, it goes back into the subdivision, which now it'll be going back into Roden Bridge. And then what is charged out of her office, it'll go into one of her accounts.
Does it go into these dedicated funds that we've been talking about?
Do you know, Janice, on that?
I don't believe so. Those are filing fees or court costs that they pay for records management or archive. That's typically, I think, it's civil litigation or somebody files. It may be part of the recording, I don't know. It's broken down that it is part of, I think it's part of civil filing. I don't know that it's part of a criminal case. But those are, yeah, those are designated, maybe part of, it's not part of, is it part of recording?
Yes, it is.
Part of recording, part of civil cases?
Yes.
Goes in the archive, goes in the, part of it goes in the archive, part of it goes in records management.
Yes, sir.
And you have to advertise, right?
Yeah, the part that comes from Roden Bridge goes to defray the advertising costs and our processing and handling costs.
That's why you advertise them.
And the only reason we advertise is we're mandated by the state to do so.
We're required to for replats.
Mandated?
Yes.
Okay. Like spending our money without our approval. And I'm, and I'm not necessarily saying we need to raise the rates on this, but if you're going to have to buy a more plat cabinet, I mean, what's one cabinet cost?
Oh, um...
I know you have that.
Yeah. $4,200 for the big one and $3,800 for the small one.
So that's, that's a fair amount of money. And if that holds 400 records, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And Judge, Mr. Walker's in the process of reviewing and revising and refining the subdivision regs that we have now.
Yes, sir.
Could be part of that. There was a bill this last session that changed a lot of what we can and can't do in some regs. So I don't remember if there was any effect on replats, but he and I will certainly be having that conversation. I suspect he'll be presenting revised regs to you within the next few months.
Because I know one of the updates is that we've got to act and make a decision within 30 days or it's automatic. Is that right?
That's right.
Are they still charged the fees on an automatic?
They are charged the fees upfront. I don't think there's a refund of the fees if it gets approved.
If it goes to an automatic approval because we didn't get things done in time, we have to rebate half of the cost of the filing fees.
Really?
The platting fees.
So you're not going to be late on them, is that correct?
Yes, sir. As long as y'all are willing to schedule special meetings when we need them, we won't be late.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? I kind of dominated that, I apologize. I mean, we keep spending money. I'd like to know where that money's replacement funds are coming from. So we have, just to review, we have on agenda item number 17, Commissioner Mallett has made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number 18, authorize Roden Bridge to trade in three dump trucks that are being replaced. See attachment 18.
Under our new budget, you'll authorize to purchase three new dump trucks. And part of that package, we're proposing to trade in three of the old ones. These are all 2008 Mack trucks with anywhere from 172,000 up to 222,000 miles. And we'd like authorization to go ahead and trade those in as part of the purchase of the new trucks.
What capacity are these?
These are the large trucks.
12, 16?
12, 16, nerd trucks.
What are you going to replace them with?
Same time.
Same time? Are they going to be yellow also?
Well, those are the little trucks.
I know.
The colored ones are the little trucks. We're going to have a yellow crew and a brown crew.
Gotcha.
I move to authorize the trade-in of three dump trucks that are being replaced.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 18 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number 19, consideration and possible approval of waterline installation permit for Wixon Creek SUD on CR 186, see attachment number 19.
Wixon Creek is proposing to install a 1-inch service line on County Road 186. It's not really close to anything. It's nearly a mile off of 3090. But it is just a service line for the new residents at that location.
Mr. Mallett, that's up on your end again, isn't it?
I believe that's Commissioner Dobianski's answer.
Yeah, it is. Oh, is it? Okay. Well then, Commissioner Dobianski, would you be in the mood to make a?
I will.
All right.
I move that we approve the waterline installation permit for Wixon Creek Subdivision on County Road 186.
Is there a second? Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 19 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number 20, consideration and possible approval of waterline installation permit for Wixon Creek SUD on...
Racy Road.
Racy? Racy Road, attachment number 20.
This is also a service line installation on Racy Road, close to the intersection with John Rice. Again, we are recommending approval of this permit.
I move to approve the waterline installation permit for Wixon Creek SUD on Racy Road.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 20 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Why isn't it Roese Road versus Racy Road?
It's long and straight and flat, and we can drive really fast. That's what I was told.
I can't argue with that. So that R-O-E-S-E is Racy Road. Gotcha. Okay. Did you want to add speed bumps to your motion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item 21, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal agreement with the town of Anderson related to Hurricane Harvey grant projects. See attachment number 21.
Previously, the court has approved these, the same form of this interlocal agreement with several of the other small communities. Anderson was a little bit slow in getting their interlocal agreement back to us. But it is the same document that we previously approved. It basically allows the county to do work for the town of Anderson related to the Hurricane Harvey grant projects. We have not heard yet if they have actually been approved, but they have submitted an application. It's similar to the standard interlocal agreement that we have, but again, it has certain specific provisions that the GLO wanted to see. The county attorney had the opportunity to look at these when they were originally prepared. It basically allows us to provide labor and equipment to the town. And they will pay for the materials similar to the standard interlocal agreement.
And they do have a new meritorious last interlocal agreement, so.
Yes, that's correct. Now, this will not replace the previous interlocal agreement. This will be in addition to, we did a statement specifically to the DLO grant project.
Right.
I think we've pre-approved three of each of these already.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with the town of Anderson related to Hurricane Harvey grant projects.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 21 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Agenda item number 22, consider selection of an engineering firm to perform design of 2016 GLO CDBG grant project and authorize negotiations of engineering services agreement. See attachment number 22.
As you're aware, Grange County was selected for a grant by the, approved for a grant by the DLO related to the 2016 flood disaster. The selection committee has solicited statements qualification from engineering firms related to the design of those improvements. The committee being Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Dobianski, and myself. We received seven submittals after going through and reviewing rating sheets on each of the firms. The selection committee interviewed the three top-rated firms. Those firms being HDR Engineering, Strand and Associates, and Mitchell Morgan. After the interviews, the selection committee has recommended to the court that we enter negotiations with HDR Engineering. For purposes of full disclosure, HDR is the firm that Grange County lured me away from when I came to work here. Want that to be out there on the record.
But you're no longer on their payroll and have not been?
No longer on their payroll and have no further financial relationship with them.
Fair enough. Do they owe you anything?
Dwayne Barrett with HDR is here also. He will be the project manager and he'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
If there's, if there are no questions, I move that we approve the engineering firm of HDR for the GLO 2016 grant project.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 22, considering, agenda item number 22, we have a motion by Commissioner Dobianski, we have a second by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number 23, consideration and possible action regarding the sale or change of property being a portion of Lot 16-2, 17, and 18, Block 26, Town of Iola. It is expected that the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation regarding real property.
Are we going to go into executive session?
Is that the preference?
Or do we want to skip ahead?
If we are, I would prefer to move this to the end, into the agenda.
Okay. We will take agenda item number 23 and we will move it to agenda item number 30-A. With that, Roden Bridge reports, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Crews have been busy. I'm pleased to report we were able to complete the 174 paving project that was started earlier this year. This was first course only. I think we got the work finished the last day that the weather was warm enough to allow us to do asphalt work. Very pleased to have that done as we're heading into winter months. It may be a while before we're able to come back and do the second course on that. Again, because of the temperature limitations on the chip ceiling. But at least for now, through the winter, those folks won't be driving in the mud and the slop. Elsewhere, you know, finished our paving program for the season. We're moving into more just rockwork on the roads, grading, ditch work, those kind of things. So you'll see a shift in the activities for the next few months. The elsewhere, besides the work the crews are doing, Magellan has started to process the final completion of their pipeline restoration. We've started receiving requests for release of their crossings on the different county roads. And we're starting to expect those are coming in one at a time. So it'll take a while to go through, but as they complete the work at each location, they're giving us an opportunity to come out and inspect the site, make sure it's restored properly. So the end is in sight for Magellan. And I think everybody'd be glad when we get to that point.
Do they have any special requirements going on the Navasota River with those platforms that washed out, washed down?
They are, they are in the process of removing all of the mats that they had in there.
Right.
They're taking thousands of them out. Then, of course, there were special requirements because of the wetlands issues in that location. But basically, they're going in on private property in down river and trying to retrieve old mats they could find. I think they're pretty well finished with that area from what they've told me. But, yeah, it's been a mess over there.
I just didn't want to leave some of our citizens in a lurch as we're taking care of roads. But they also have that, I don't know what kind of obligation, but I know that caused a significant problem.
It did. And that was one of the first areas they started on, kind of just going in, cleaning up that area.
Okay.
And I believe their process is that when they are done with all the restoration on each parcel, they're going back and asking the property owners to sign off on the restoration, which would include removing all their materials, equipment, re-grading the site, putting, you know, registration, grass work down and everything.
Okay.
But again, those are private property issues.
Right.
Our, our interest is the restoration of county right of way, making sure that the crossings they had are properly restored, the ditches are re-graded, and they will also be seating those locations.
Thank you.
In some instances, where the property owners have not requested it, they are also giving us the color to have full rock that was put down on those crossings. We are receiving some benefit out of that.
Good, thank you. Good. Thank you.
Maintenance farm project, as you're aware, we started, we authorized a change order at the last session. Unfortunately, delays in doing all that drew them off schedule. So they haven't started back yet, but they will be coming back outside shortly. And then the 202 bridge replacement that's being done in 2015, GLO grant is scheduled to start December 1st. We gave them some extra lead time because of the long ordering process on some of their precast filings and beams. Once they, once they get all their precast elements in hand, the construction should go pretty quickly. We give them a six-month contract time for that work. And then elsewhere, I've added the subdivision coordination, coordination items to the report. Currently, we have three plats that are being processed, the King Oak tree plat that you just saw, a small subdivision on County Road 152, and another one on County Road 220, which would be based on a larger development. And then the Anderson Ridge subdivision that was approved several months ago is now under construction. And we've been monitoring the construction out there, make sure that everything is being done properly. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We've been at this an hour and 32 minutes. I would propose to take a nice long six-minute break. People get comfortable and then come back.